But we get paid this day off, right? You don't want to go to work in school. Welcome, everyone, and Happy New Year. Today is the 12th of January 2023. This meeting is being recorded and will be available shortly thereafter for scheduled and on-demand viewing on any smartphone or tablet device. If anybody else is recording the meeting, please let us know. Pursuant to Governor Baker's July 16, 2022, signing of an act relative to extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency, including the extensions of his March 12, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law until March 31, 2023. This meeting of the ZVA is being conducted via in-person and remote participation and shall afford adequate alternative means of public access via Microsoft Teams by calling the phone number 1-508-945-4410, and you have to punch in the conference ID number, which is 444-044-839, then you hit the pound. Or you can join the meeting via Microsoft Teams through the link in the posted agenda. Despite our best efforts, we may not be able to provide for real-time access, and we will post a record of this meeting on the town's website as soon as possible. In accordance with town policy, the public can speak to any issue, hearing, or business item on the agenda during the meeting when recognized by the chair. To authorize this hybrid form of meeting, I'll ask for a roll call of all members, starting with Buck, please.
Buck, James M. Upson approves this format.
Thank you.
William Grau approves.
Paul C. Simple approves.
David S. Nixon approves.
David R. Thompson approves.
Randy Podash approves.
I would ask that any citizen or non-board member participating via a call on the phone, please give us your name and the last four digits of your phone number for ID purposes. The meeting is conducted as follows. The hearing notice will be read by the lady to my right. This is Sarah B. Clark, and she's the PPO for the Town of Chatham. That's the Principal Permitting Officer. Following that, the representative or the individual that filed the appeal or the application will give a presentation. Then we would ask for anybody either here or on Microsoft Teams who wishes to speak in favor, only in favor, to do so. Then I would read any and all correspondence that we might have. Following with that, I would ask for anyone who wishes to speak either against the appeal or the application or has a specific question to join the meeting. It could be, there might be some rebuttal testimony after that section. Then we would have the board members ask any direct questions they might have to anyone present. When that is done, we would close the public hearing and go into deliberations. Deliberations are open strictly to the board members unless a board member introduces into the conversation some individual. We would then take a vote in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. You need to have a supermajority to be successful. That means, in our case, since there are five voters, you need to get four yes votes. Voting today, I would say, I need to tell you that, we have Buck, we have Paul, we have myself, we have Dave, and we have Randy. I don't think there's anything else I need to say, except we have some minutes. I think they were amended, correct, Paul?
We do have the, I guess, the minutes of December 1, 2022, which I'll move to approve as amended.
Okay. I need to have a volunteer that will second anything Paul has to say. Does anybody volunteer for that? Well, great, thank you.
Second.
Very good. We'll take a vote of the voters to accept the minutes. Buck?
Buck says yes.
Paul?
Paul says yes.
Dave?
Dave Thompson says yes.
Randy? And I say yes, thank you. Okay, so Sarah, let's begin with 22-116, please.
Application number 22-116, Michael and Kristen Crook, care of William G. Litchfield, Esquire, 330 Orleans Road, North Chatham, Mass. 02650. Owners of property located at 8 Portview Road, also shown on the Town of Chatham's assessor's map, 4C Block 42, Lot SM 21. The applicant seeks to enlarge, extend, or change a non-conforming dwelling on a non-conforming lot via the construction of a breezeway, garage, and deck. The existing dwelling is non-conforming in that it is located 15.4 feet from the road where a 25-foot setback is required. The proposed additions and deck will conform to the road and a butter setback requirements. The existing building coverage is 1,993 square feet, 16.6%, and the proposed building coverage is 2,492 square feet, 21%, where 15% is the maximum allowed. The lot is non-conforming in that it contains 12,000 square feet, where 20,000 square feet is required in the R-20 zoning district. A special permit is required under Mass. General Law, Chapter 48, Section 6 and Section 5b of the protective bylaw.
Bill?
Yes, I'm going to recuse myself from this case, Mr. Chairman, if that's okay. He's my direct abutter.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Litchfield.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Bill Litchfield here on behalf of the applicants, Mike and Kristen Crook. With me today is their proposed builder, Bob Stallow. Actually, Bob built the house some years ago. The Crooks regret that they're not able to be here today. Mike is out of town on business, and that sort of relates to why we're here today. The Crooks are getting to the point where they are planning to retire to Chatham, and they would like to have a garage. This board has historically understood the need for a garage. In a perfect world, most people have two cars today, and you'd like a two-car garage, but this lot is not a terribly large lot. It's in the midsize range for the neighborhood. It's about 12,000 square feet. So the Crooks, in working with Bob Stallow and with Steve Cook of Kattuah Bay Design and Dan Croto of Marine Engineering, tried to figure out how to get a minimal garage, a one-car garage, with a connecting space. When we first started talking about the proposal, I said, you know, coverage is an issue. You're already at 16.6%, and we had prior designs, which had numbers in the 22 and 23 percent range. The percent range is high. The actual number is not that high. We're going to be eliminating a shed, which gives us 180 square feet to play with. So the actual increase in numbers is not that high, but because the lot itself is 12,000 square feet, it is a significant increase. We understand that a 21% coverage is a challenge for us, but I think, and I will explain to you, that having looked at the alternatives, and we did, this is really the only way to allow a garage on this property. So the Crooks very much would like to do it. As I said, they hope to be here year-round. Parenthetically, the sign near the front of the house about summer rentals is not theirs. It's for a butter's house down that easement way. So if you're, if sometimes people ask for things and they say that they're for themselves and maybe they're for rental purposes, I ask the Crooks, that is not their sign. They don't rent the house, they use it, and they want to use it on a full-time basis. But to make that more feasible, having a garage for a car for the winter and for storage of stuff is a reasonable request. So Sarah, if you would bring up that, thank you. That's what's proposed, obviously, a fairly simple one-car garage, widened out a little bit more than the absolute need for one car in order to allow for storage. It will, the design of it, while we didn't show the entire house, the design of it is compatible with the existing house, and we think, notwithstanding the cupola, that it would be an appropriate addition to the neighborhood. Thank you, thank you very much, Sarah. That is the house as it now exists. And that actually shows one of the alternatives as to coverage, what we do about coverage. There is, as you know, a very attractive porch on the front of that house. It's about 300 square feet. We could tear down that porch and lower the coverage. That would be architecturally and aesthetically inappropriate. It would certainly not serve the interests of the neighborhood. Similarly, but it would lower the coverage if you approve a garage. Similarly, we could take the sunroom off the back of the house, sunroom that nobody except for the Crooks and members of the zoning board of appeals who went into the backyard, no one knows it's there. That's another 160 square feet, but we could take, the sunroom wasn't on that plan. But that's another alternative to lessen the coverage, but I don't think it's an appropriate thing to do. So I'll go into the criteria as to adequacy of site, including building coverage and setbacks, notwithstanding our nonconformities as to the street setback coverage and the lot size, the site is adequate for the home. The house is actually 35 to 40 feet back from the pavement. If you look up at the top there, you can see the words "edge of pavement." When Portview Road was laid out, that's the southerly edge. So we are much, much further back from the road, and that gives us that wedge under the cursor of land that is technically part of the layout, but increases the feel of the size of the lot, which is, I think, another aspect that's important to consider, that while the coverage number is high, we have feelingly a much larger road. It would appear, just glancing at that, that Portview Road may cross the direct-to-butter's front yard, but since he's not in the room right now, we're not going to worry about that. The paving is somewhere else. If you approve the special permit, the site remains adequate for construction of the garage and the small connecting breezeway. There's no change in setbacks, and again, while coverage increases, it's necessary for the garage, because as I indicated, the alternatives, which we considered, are simply not particularly palatable. Parenthetically, one more alternative, I suppose, we put it back in the rear of the house over the patio, have a long curving driveway. That wouldn't change the coverage. Coverage is still going to be the same, but that's, you know, would have less effect on streetscape, but I don't think it has a negative effect on streetscape if you approve it. As to compatibility of size, the lot is in the mid-range for the neighborhood, as is the footprint, except for a handful of older sizes. Obviously, if you approve the special permit, the numbers will increase, but the lot, again, benefits from the layout of the road and seems somewhat large, and it actually is. I made one last drive around the neighborhood, and I counted of 15 houses in the immediate neighborhood, basically the circle and Taylor's Pond to the right. Nine or 10 of the 15 houses in the neighborhood have garages. So it's certainly not an unusual request, and in New England in the winter, it's a particularly understandable request. As to the extent of increase of nonconformities, they were read by Sarah when she read the hearing notice. Obviously, coverage increases, but there are no other changes, and the garage meets all dimensional requirements being set far back from the street, probably about 50s feet, and 21.8, 21.2 at the closest to the butter on the west side, where in the R-20 zone where we are, the requirement is only 15 feet. As to suitability of the site, this is a residential lot, obviously, in a purely residential neighborhood, and unlike some lots, particularly those on the left-hand side of Veil River Road, ours is entirely buildable upland. The site is suitable for the garage. It's without impact on the natural environment. As to scale, citing mass views and vistas, the existing house, I think you would agree, is a very attractive house. It is consistent with the scale and sighting of the neighborhood. It's without impact on views and vistas. If you approve the special permit, the scale will remain appropriate. The architectural plans echo the existing home. It has very little impact on, and it says streetscape in what you have in front of you, but on the easement to the left-hand side because of the vegetation, which is there now, and I'll get to that in a moment. As to compatibility of use, it remains the same, residential use. We will be putting in a new septic system, as shown there. The existing septic system is going to be removed. The leaching area will be on the south side of the house, and the tank will be under the driveway, but it'll be H10 or H20, whatever it is, the components that it has to be. Jay, is it H10 or H20? It's H something or other.
H20.
H20, thank you. So that's an appropriate location for the septic system. The other criteria, traffic flow and safety, noise and litter, are not at issue. What is at issue, as you know, is whether the proposed addition of a garage with a small connecting section, which conforms to all setback requirements, is substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the current nonconforming structure in a nonconforming lot. And parenthetically, every single lot in the neighborhood has less than 20,000 square feet of buildable upland, and most have less than 20,000 square feet. Coverage increases, but with the understandable goal of having a garage and consideration having been given to various designs and alternatives, we couldn't come up with another way to have a garage. I would also point out, and he can speak for himself, but Attorney Jamie Norcross is here. He represents the Hamels, who were the owners of the property that has the benefit of that easement. We have come to, we think, a very positive understanding with Jamie's clients. There'll be no great changes to the easement. There'll be no parking in the easement area. We will maintain the screening between the two. When you went out there, you saw a considerable amount of planting that the Crooks had done. They may have to move some of those trees, cedars or junipers or whatever they are, but they will be restoring them. We'll keep the easement open, easement area open, except for any short-term construction issues. I would suggest, obviously, I think he would probably do this on his own event if I didn't suggest it, that there'd be a limitation on summertime construction from June 30th, the Labor Day, out of deference to the Crooks and out of deference to the entire neighborhood, one in which the Crooks have enjoyed living for the last six years, would like to live in more and on a year-round basis. To make that more feasible, more appropriate, they would like to have a garage, but obviously we need a special permit from this board to do so.
Good afternoon, Jamie Norcross. As Bill mentioned, I represent the butter at Forport View, Ian and Chrissy Hamel, and they had some questions and concerns, but Bill and his clients were extremely responsive, and we've come to an understanding, and my clients asked me to come today just to express to the board they fully support the project. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in favor? Anybody on?
There is no one on team that wishes to speak in favor.
Okay, then I will read the correspondence. First, this is an email from Georgia. She is the health agent for the Town of Chatham. She writes, "On January 10th, I've reviewed the plan. The renovations will not add septic flow to the existing three-bedroom dwelling and are acceptable at this time. A deed restriction for three bedrooms will be required, identifying the room over the garage as a home office. That may not be considered a bed, that it may not be considered a bed. A new septic system is needed, and application of plans must be submitted for review to the Health Division prior to receiving a building permit." Then we have a note from John Gillis and Marilyn Mormon Gillis, and they are at 184 Mill Creek Road. And they write to us on December 28th. "We have no objection until the change is proposed." And that is the extent of the correspondence. So now I'd ask for anyone either here or on Microsoft Teams who wishes to either raise a question or speak against. If so, please indicate now you'd like to join the meeting.
Sue McKenzie would like to speak.
Okay, Susan McKenzie? The floor is yours.
Hi, my name is Sue McKenzie. My husband and I own the property at 162 Taylor's Pond Road, and we are directly downhill from the 8 Portview Road. And we have two concerns. One, that with the increase in impermeable area, that there will be a subsequent increase and runoff and potential erosion on the hillside, and we would request that drywells be installed at downspouts. Our second concern is the proposed placement for the septic leach field. They have it in the back of their property, which is at the top of the hill. We are directly below them, so we would ask that any preventive measures such as a vertical liner be used to prevent their effluent from crossing the property line. Thank you for your time, and we respectfully ask that the Health and Building Departments take our requests into consideration when reviewing any proposed plans. Thank you.
Okay, is there anyone else either here on Microsoft Teams that would like to speak either against or has a specific question?
I see no one else that wishes to speak.
Mr. Litchfield, did you want to address that lady's concerns?
Thank you, and we appreciate Ms. McKenzie's questions. While I have not spoken with the homeowner specifically, we have the advantage of having his builder here, and he can perhaps, I don't want to ask him to come up and take the mic, but I assume that drywalls and downspout, drywells and downspouts would be no problem at all, and we can, we can agree, readily agree to Ms. McKenzie's questions in that regard. Notwithstanding my profession and having learned far more about septic systems as an attorney than I ever envisioned learning as a law student, I learned from Mr. Riley a great deal as well, but that's a separate issue. I can't specifically agree to a vertical buffer, but liner, rather, but we will, I can say that we will certainly agree to work cooperatively with the Mackenzies and meet all Board of Health and Title V requirements. So I, my understanding of the septic system in that location is that there shouldn't be a problem, but we will certainly do all that we can to make sure there is none.
Okay, then we'll have questions from the board. Buck, do you have any questions?
I'll pass.
Okay. Paul?
Just to, in my general education efforts here, as I look at the 1999 plans, I see a note on the plans for positive metal connections. Can you tell me what that would be or why they would be?
In this case, I am going to ask Mr. Stallow to come up, because I was not involved in the construction at that time. Do you want to have any ability? You're talking about the Moran Site Plan, Paul?
I'm talking about the A3 on the 99 plans.
Yep.
It's written in there, and I'm just curious as to what the, what the purpose of that is.
I'm going to defer to Bob, and I see where you're talking about.
Yes, Robert Stallow was the original builder of the house. That was put there for wind load.
For what?
Wind load.
Oh, wind load, okay.
Yeah, for the wind, yeah.
All right, great, thank you. The other question I had is on the Moran Engineering Plans for September 30, 22 and November 9, 22. They show the shed in two different locations. I'm not quite sure why.
The plan that I have showed, and there are two different plans, I agree, but the shed will be removed rather than relocated. Is that correct, Bob? Yeah, the shed's going to be gone. So I noticed that as well on the November plan. It's shown sort of in the area of the proposed soil absorption system, and in the prior plan, it's shown, well, it's shown in two different places, but it's going away regardless.
All right. Okay, I think that's the only questions I had.
Questions?
I have no questions, Attorney Litchfield, thank you.
Randy?
No questions.
And I don't have any questions.
I'll move to close the hearing and move into deliberations.
Randy? Okay, we need a vote on that. Buck?
Buck votes yes.
Paul votes yes.
Dave Thompson votes yes.
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, deliberations, Paul.
Well, I think it clearly is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. It looks like an improvement for what people want to do here, and I'm not too concerned about the coverage, given the overall size of the lot, so I tend to view this favorably.
Dave?
I agree with Paul 100%.
Randy?
As do I.
Buck?
Well, I agree with Paul, but originally, I didn't feel that way. I was glad to see Mr. Norcross come and show that the neighbors were in support of the project. The letter of positive response from Mill Creek across the water was good to hear, and the fact that another neighbor had some issues, and that was resolved to the satisfaction by
the satisfaction by the builder. So I'm, I'm in support.
Initially, I was not in support of this, but after hearing Mr. Litchfield's presentation as to all the alternatives they have, and I'm a big fan of garages, so he knows that, so it works pretty well. So I think, as the four of you have pointed out, this is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood.
I will, excuse me, go ahead. Mr. Litchfield, did you have something?
If I may?
Yes.
Oh, sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I realize you're in deliberations. I neglected to say something that I want to put on, on the record right now. There was confusion among the design professionals as to whether the second-floor balcony would be a deck or a balcony. The croaks would like to have a deck on the second floor. That is not proposed today. What is proposed today is what you have in front of you. If they decide to, that they would like to pursue that, there'll be a lot of discussions and negotiations. We obviously would have to come back to you, but I didn't want you to be, to feel nickel-dimed or deceived if that ever happened. So before you vote, I simply wanted to offer that information for you.
We appreciate that very much, because sometimes we do feel nickel-dimed. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, what do you think of restrictions, Paul?
Well, I agree that we should have the standard restrictions with respect to summertime construction in this location. The, the other things that had been mentioned, it sounds to me as if they've been resolved without our need to put additional conditions on the permit. So I think what I would say is I would move to approve the application as submitted with the condition that all construction activity and vehicles be contained on-site or at neighboring property with the permission of the property owner, that between June 30th and Labor Day, there's no exterior construction allowed, no work should be permitted on the weekends and construction activity between 8:00 a.m. and 5:00 p.m. only.
Yeah, I, I agree with you about, we really don't want to get into the Board of Health business about all that kind of stuff, so. I should ask Mr. Litchfield and Mr. Stella, when you plan to do this?
After Labor Day.
Okay.
But, but the, the only point, and this relates to the size of the lot, the front yard, what seems to be the front yard isn't really part of the site legally. So if we use our driveway, our own driveway, which is not actually part of this lot, I just want to make clear that you and Mr. Briggs understand that that would be within the spirit of what you're talking about, that on-site would in part be within the legal layout of Portview Road because of the, the way things are constructed. Sarah, if you could bring up the...
So you'd like us to amend this to allow the use, the illegal use of the driveway?
The illegal, yes, the, the longstanding and accepted use of Portview Road.
Yeah, that's called illegal. That's quite all right.
But this, this, this area up here is really not part of the site, but it seems like part of the site. I just wanted to be precise about it.
I think with that understanding, I will continue to go forward. Yes.
Okay, so Paul's made a motion. Randy?
Second.
Okay, we need to vote on that.
Buck? Buck votes yes. Paul votes yes.
Dave Thompson votes yes.
Randy Fardash votes yes.
And I do, that's a unanimous vote. Thank you very much, Mr. Litchfield.
Thank you very much.
And Mr. Stell. Okay, Sarah, we're under 22-118, please.
Application number 22-118, Linda and Brian Minor, care of Brian Minor, 671 Orleans Road, Chatham, Mass. 02633. Owners of property located at 671 Orleans Road, also shown on the Town of Chatham's Assessor's Map, 12I Block 12, Lot 4. The applicant seeks to enlarge standard change a nonconforming guest house on a nonconforming lot via the demolition of the existing guest house and the construction of a new dwelling. The existing guest house is nonconforming in that it is located 21.1 feet from the west of Lea Butter. The proposed dwelling will be nonconforming in that it will be located 21.4 feet from the east of Lea Butter where a 25-foot setback is required. If approved, the existing dwelling will be renovated to become the guest house, to become the guest house, and the new structure will become the primary dwelling on the property. The existing building coverage is 1,858 square feet, 4.6%, and the proposed building coverage is 3,668 square feet, 9.1%, where 10% is the maximum allowed. The lot contains 40,108 square feet in the R40 zoning district. A special permit is required under Mass. General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 6 and Section 5b of the protective bylaw.
We received, the following email today was from Brian Minor to Sarah Clark. "I'm writing to request the continuance of ZBA App #22-1182, January 26, 2023." It turns out that we really couldn't hear this today, and as opposed to break it up, the applicant has preferred that we push it off. If you have any questions, Sarah can answer. Okay, Paul, we need a motion.
No questions, so I'll move to grant the continuance to, is it to the 26th, June, January 26, 2023?
Second.
Okay, we need a vote on that. Buck?
Buck votes yes. Paul votes yes.
Dave Thompson votes yes.
Randy votes yes.
And I vote yes, and that's that. Okay. 22-119, please.
Application number 22-119, the Love Realty Trust, care of William F. Riley Esquire, P.O. Box 707, Chatham, Mass. 02633. Owner of property located at 46 Barbara Drive, also shown on the Town of Chatham's Assessor's Map, 11G Block 21, Lot G59. The applicant seeks to enlarge standard change a conforming dwelling on a nonconforming lot via the construction of an addition. The existing dwelling and proposed addition will comply with all bulk and dimensional requirements of the bylaw, but is considered a substantial alteration and under the Second Except Clause of Section 6 of Mass. General Law, Chapter 40A, such substantial alteration requires the grant of a special permit. The existing building coverage is 827 square feet, 5.6%, and the proposed building coverage is 1,522 square feet, 10.4%, where 15% is the maximum allowed. The lot is nonconforming in that it contains 14,700 square feet, where 20,000 square feet is required in the R20 zoning district. A special permit is required under Mass. General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 6 and Section
How's the new year going for you, Mr. Riley?
It's going spectacularly well, thank you. I hope yours is as well. So I'm Bill Riley, representing the Love Realty Trust. It's not Valentine's Day yet, but we've got, love is in the air. So, so this is a...
You're back to torment us once again. Go ahead.
It's a delicious kind of torment, though, don't you think? In any event, so the Loves want to add a garage, basically is what they're doing, with space over the garage and a connector. So if you've been up in the neighborhood, obviously, it's a, it's a older neighborhood. Most of the homes built in the, in the late 50s and early 60s. Some have been improved and are enlarged. So the, this property, the house was built, actually built in 1960. So the, this was an opportunity they felt where they could not only add a garage, but you know, do some, spiffing up the interior of the, of the building as well, reorganizing the bedrooms on the second floor. So it's a, it's a pretty modest expansion, and the, I think the design is very much in keeping. Can you put up, there you go. Sarah's always one step ahead of me. Anyway, but the design's very much in keeping with the existing residents. And the, the, although, you know, it's a significant increase in the size, we're still at below 11%, it's 10.6% or 10.8% of building coverage, where 15% would be allowed. Both the original house and the proposed addition meet all dimensional requirements, setbacks, and height. So I think that, at least I hope you will agree with me, that this is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. The, I'll just run through the criteria. So adequacy of the size of the site in terms of the proposed use. So the applicant believes the size of the site is adequate for the proposed project because the building coverage with the existing building and the proposed addition is only 10.8%, where 15% is allowed. And as I indicated, the proposed addition and the existing house meet all current setbacks as well as the height maximum under our bylaw. Compatibility of the size of the proposed structure with a living increase of 550 square feet, giving a total living area of 856 square feet, the applicant feels that the building is compatible, and we have attached a third sheet showing the, the net areas under the, the Assessor's Office. We also noted that the applicant, the current building has 1,425 square feet net area, and a revised building will have 1,836 square feet of net area. So in other words, we exclude the garage from that area. The extended proposed increase in a nonconforming nature of the structure or use, because the lot does not meet the minimum 20,000-square-foot requirement under the Bransford and Bjorklund cases, this is considered a intensification of the nonconforming use, that is a residential use on less than 20,000 square feet. Suitability of the site, including but not limited to impact on the neighboring properties or on the natural environment, including slopes, 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 vegetation, wetlands, groundwater, water bodies, and stormwater runoff. We're not particularly concerned about wetlands because the property's bracketed by two roads with Barbara Drive on the front of the property and Wilford Road on the, on the rear of the property. The, there is a slope, as you look at the house to the left, and so during construction, the, you know, steps are going to be taken to prevent stormwater runoff going onto that neighbor's property. Impact of scale, sighting, and mass on neighborhood visual character, including views, vistas, and streetscapes. Because the proposed one-car garage and connector are done in the same style as the existing building, the applicant believes that the extent of the impact on neighborhood visual character, including views, vistas, and streetscapes, is minimal and will constitute an improvement. The applicant believes that this change is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing structure. Compatibility of the use with neighboring uses, as a single-family neighborhood, and this is a single-family home, and will remain that way. So that would be our presentation.
Thank you.
Happy to answer any questions.
Is there anyone either here or on Microsoft Teams that would like to speak in favor of this application? If so, please indicate now you'd like to join the meeting.
I see no one that wishes to speak in favor.
I'll read the correspondence from Georgia, a health agent here in Chatham. She writes, "On January 10th, I have reviewed the plans to add a garage. The property is approved for connection to the municipal sewer for a total of four bedrooms. I have no concerns about the proposal before you at this time," and that's the total extent of the correspondence. Is there anyone here on Microsoft Teams who would like to speak against this application or has a specific question? If so, indicate now you'd like to join the meeting.
I see no one opposition or no one with a question.
Questions from the board. Dave Thompson?
Thank you. Dave Thompson has no questions for Mr. Riley.
Randy?
Randy has no questions.
Buck?
Buck has no questions.
Bill?
No questions.
Paul?
No questions.
Nor do I.
All right, I'll move to close the hearing and move into deliberations.
We need a vote on that. Buck?
Buck votes yes.
Paul?
Paul votes yes.
Dave?
Dave Thompson votes yes.
Randy?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay. Deliberations. Randy?
I think it's a great project. It's absolutely not detrimental to the neighborhood or substantially. It meets all the criteria, and I would support it.
Buck?
I certainly agree it's not detrimental to the neighborhood and be quite easy to approve.
Bill?
Yeah, I would also agree with what was said.
And I would agree.
And I would agree.
Paul?
I'll move to approve the application as submitted. What's our plan here for construction, Bill?
I think they want to get started as quickly as possible. In terms of restrictions, the lot, as you know, if you've been there, I think has plenty of room for the summertime, perhaps a restriction that no work before 8:00, no work after 5:00, and no work on weekends.
Sounds reasonable.
That sounds reasonable. I'll move to approve the application as submitted with the...
Sorry.
With the provision of conditions that all construction activity and vehicles be contained on-site or at a neighboring property with the permission of the property owner, that between June 30th and Labor Day, no work would be permitted on weekends, and construction activity would be between 8:00 a.m. and 5:00 p.m. only.
Thank you.
Second. Second.
Randy loves being a voting member, I can see that.
You ready?
Yes, please.
Buck votes yes.
Paul votes yes. Dave Thompson votes yes.
And Randy Fardash votes yes.
And I vote yes, that's a unanimous vote. Thank you, Mr. Riley.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your help.
Hello. Okay, Sarah, 22-122.
Application number 22-122, Steven Spivak, 75, Nod Road, Ridgefield, Connecticut, 06877. Owner of property located at 8 Lobster Lane, also shown on the Town of Chatham's Assessor's Map, 15A Block 7B, Lot X3. The applicant seeks dimensional variance from the required Butter setback for the installation of an exterior mechanical system appliance, AC condenser. The AC condenser is proposed to be installed 12.5 feet from the east of Lea Butter, where a 25-foot setback is required. The lot contains 2.85 acres in an R40 zoning district. A dimensional variance is required under Mass. General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 10, and Section 8D2C of the protective bylaw.
I don't see a presenter.
He's online.
Oh, he's online.
I'm here, hello.
Hi, why don't you introduce yourself?
Hello, I'm Steve Spivak, 8 Lobster Lane. I live in Ridgefield, Connecticut, and we purchased the house at Lobster Lane in the Lighthouse Village community there in October of last year. And we do, we do visit the house year-round. We do have guests visit the house year-round, both family members and renters, and mainly for the purposes of the electrical bills and environmental impact and noise impacts, we wanted to switch from current electric heat and window unit air conditioning to a mini-split system.
Okay, so you are requesting a variance, and I believe you have the criteria. So would you discuss that with us, please?
Yes, so, I'm sorry, the criteria of the units themselves or the location?
No, we have criteria for special permits, we have criteria for variances. And so you need to discuss, well, that's the specifics. You might have heard Mr. Riley discuss the specific criteria for the special permit. Well, I, I know that you have that information somewhere, so you can read it.
Sure.
If you look at your screen...
Okay, so the financial hardship, substantial hardship, financial or otherwise, due to the electric bills, our electric bills with electric heat in the winter are $900-plus per month. You know, in the summer, the air conditioning is close to $500 per month, and so what we're requesting is a variance to allow for the installation of the mini-split systems 12.5 feet from the abutter instead of the 25 feet that is required by law.
Okay, and if you read the first variance criteria?
The ZBA may grant, ZBA, oh, sorry, the ZBA may grant a variance from the zoning bylaws requirements. The State Zoning Act controls the procedures and standards for granting a variance, and the ZBA may grant a variance if it finds that owing to circumstances related to the soil conditions, shape or topography of the land or structures, especially affecting such land or structures but not affecting generally the zoning district which is located, a literal enforcement of the ordinance or bylaw would involve a substantial hardship, financial or otherwise, to the petitioner, and that desirable relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and without nullifying or substantially derogating from the intent or purpose of the bylaw. And so what I'm requesting and trying to present is that because so many people in the community already have these mini-split systems, because the systems do actually operate more quietly than the window units which are currently there, and because of the hardship presented by operating on the current electrical system and window units in the summer, that we are requesting relief.
Yeah, and if you talk about your lot, you might mention the size of it, which limits you greatly.
Yes, and unfortunately, our lot does, has a deck in the rear, a very small wooded area, approximately 10 feet, and then the fence, which is the sort of the property line with Oyster, with the Oyster Lane, with the home right there on Oyster Lane. And there's really no place else to put this unit other than right in that area marked in orange. And, you know, unfortunately, based on the layout of the house, the only way to get to the required 25 feet would be to put the units in the front of the house, which is not permitted, you know, by our condominium association. So we're requesting to put it in the back of the house between that, in that orange area between the deck and the outdoor shower.
Okay, thank you. That's good.
Thank you, I'm sorry.
Is there anyone here on Microsoft Teams that would like to speak in favor of this?
I see no one that wishes to speak in favor.
And I see no correspondence, so I'll ask, is there anyone in the audience, either here or there, that wishes to speak against this or has a specific question? If so, please indicate now you'd like to join the meeting.
I see no one that wishes to speak in opposition or has a question.
Okay. Does anybody on the board have a question?
I do have a question.
Okay.
When I'm looking at the site plan, it indicates a proposed unit, 54DBA. This unit is within the appropriate setbacks, which is on the, towards the front of the house, I guess. Are you putting in two, are you going to put in two units?
The proposal is to put in two units, one for the, for that side of the house, which is within the required 25 feet, and the second unit, which is the one we're requesting the variance for.
And is there a reason why the unit that would go within the appropriate setbacks could not service the whole house?
The main reason is because of the location of the interior units, and it would require the running of those conduit lines across the exterior and up and over, and there's one bedroom, there's rooms on either side of the house that need the interior rooms, so the amount of piping that would be required to run across the exterior would be inefficient.
And when you say that you can't locate it in the front of the house, that's due to condominium restrictions?
That's correct.
And is it possible to get a waiver of those condominium restrictions?
It's not. That's, we had a meeting the other day, and it's a requirement, it's a requirement of the association that all air conditioning units be in the rear of the houses.
Well, the unit that you're talking about, which would be servicing the other part of the house, doesn't appear to be in the rear of the house.
So that's a little side area with some bushes there, so it's not, it's not visible from the, from the front.
So is the issue whether it's visible from the front or whether it is in front?
The issue is if it's in the front.
So how do you put in the unit on the other side of the house there if it's in the front?
I guess, I guess that's sort of on the side. There's, that's just a very small bump out there, so that's really on the side of the house.
Okay, I don't think I have any other questions.
Any other member have a question? Yes, Randy?
So, good afternoon, sir. My question is, you talked about some piping that would have to go on the exterior of the house in order to make that happen. That would be ugly, wouldn't it?
I mean, it wouldn't be the best-looking thing, but they do a pretty nice job kind of wrapping, wrapping that. Yeah, it would, it would be pretty ugly, but the way I've seen it is they do sort of that white cover, and it's the back of the house, but from what I, from what I understood from, from the contractor, the proposed contractor, E.F. Winslow, is that running that many lines across the exterior of the house would be less efficient.
So would it also be maybe dangerous? I'm trying, work with me here, because I'm trying to help you out.
Oh, yeah, well, no, I'm, sorry, I'm, I, I wouldn't say it would be dangerous, but it might defeat the purpose of increasing the efficiency of the system, and we might need a larger system outside. The, by using two units outside instead of one, we can use smaller units versus a bigger unit to run all of the five interior systems.
So your plan is the only real practical choice, correct?
It is, yeah, and we've had, we had quite a few proposals, and all were splitting the system like this versus one, one unit, just because of the size that that one unit would have to be. Going with two units was a lot more effective.
Okay, thank you.
Even though more costly, more, more efficient and effective, and avoids using all those exterior lines across the house.
Phil, you had a question?
Just wanted, wanted to clarify kind of on what Paul was saying. So the condo rules say no air conditioning unit in the front and the side, or just the front?
Just the front.
Okay, so you're not violating a condo rule by putting it on the side?
No.
And that meets the setback?
That meets the setback of 25 feet, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Buck, did you have? No, okay.
I'll move to close the hearing and move into deliberations.
Second.
Need a vote?
Buck votes yes.
Paul votes yes.
Dave Thompson votes yes.
Randy votes yes.
And I vote yes. So, Buck, deliberations.
I ran a split system for 10 or 15 years. I loved it dearly, and sometimes you have to do what the applicant is saying, and I understand that, and I think while he's not a professional presentant, presenter in this forum, he did a good job explaining why he needs to do what he wants to do, and I will support it.
Phil?
Yeah, I think all things being equal and looking at this lot, understanding a little bit about a split system, I can see why he would want to split those up. While I don't think it's totally impossible to put it on the side, I can see the, all of it on the side, I should say. I think in this case, I would also support it if I were voting.
Paul?
Well, once again, we have a difficult situation because we're dealing with a variance requirement, and that's always difficult, but I, at the same time, can see that the overall benefit to the applicant and perhaps to the neighborhood is of significance, given that we're diminishing the amount of noise that would be available. In terms of whether this is owing to soil conditions, shape, or topography of the land, I don't think we meet that criteria, given the fact that the lots, almost all of the lots in the Little Beach area are small and have abutter lines very close. I think in this case, though, perhaps the structure portion of the initial criteria for the zoning variance would apply, given the effect on the structure from dealing with heating and cooling being available. So I think on that basis, I would end up vying for the criteria.
Dave?
Thank you. We actually use four of these units in our home, and we're doing it off of two condensers. They're very efficient, they're not noisy, and I think this is the way things are going to go around here with using units like this. I'm 100% in favor.
Randy?
I'm also in favor. I think he meets the criteria for variance because he has a financial hardship, a substantial one. He also has the topography topic in that it attaches to the building and structure like Paul mentioned, and the bylaw allows for that, so he really, his hands are tied. And it really doesn't take away from the intent of the bylaw enough not to grant it, so I support it.
What kind of conditions, Paul?
Well, when do you plan to do this, Mr. Spivak?
So I'm going through the Mass Save Home Evaluation, so I have a couple of other things to do in terms of insulation. I'm working with the contractor, E.F. Winslow, and I'm going to go through the Cape Light Compact Loan Program, so I have to go through that application. So ideally, that should be fairly quick, and I would ideally like to start in February or March, so that we're done by, by April or May.
So you would anticipate you'd be done before the beginning of June?
Absolutely.
All right, well, I'll move to approve the application as submitted with the condition that there would be no construction activity from June 1 of 2023 through Labor Day of June 1023, and that, I don't know how you'd keep all the construction activity on-site. The only, excuse me, the only way this really works is if it's off-season.
Right.
So for that reason, I don't think I'd put any other conditions on there.
I agree.
So that's the motion.
Second.
Buck votes yes.
Paul votes yes.
Dave Thompson votes yes.
And Randy votes yes.
And I vote that, yes, that's a unanimous decision. Thank you very much, and good luck.
Thank you. Can I share one thing? Just, I just want to tell you how incredibly helpful Ms. Clark was throughout this process, and in terms of helping me understand what I needed to do. I mean, clearly, I didn't do a great job, but she was so helpful in answering questions and being available, and so I just want to say thank you for that. You know, as a homeowner, a new homeowner in Chatham, you made it as easy as it could be, so thank you for your help.
Yes, Mrs. Clark is more than valuable, not only to us, but also the townspeople, such as yourself.
Thank you very much for that.
Yeah, okay, great.
My pleasure.
Okay, Mrs. Clark, we got another one here?
I think that gentleman has something else he'd like to get Mrs. Clark to help him with, so.
Application number 22-123. Joseph L. and Jenny M. Nosera care of James M. Norcross, Esquire, Peel Box 707, Chatham Mass. 02633. Owners of property located at 7 Easy Street, also shown on the Town of Chatham's Assessor's Map, 12M, Block 28, Lot 9. The applicant seeks to enlarge, extend, or change a nonconforming dwelling on a nonconforming lot via the demolition of the existing dwelling and the construction of a new dwelling. The existing dwelling is nonconforming, and that is located partially within the Coastal Conservancy District, floodplain elevation 11, 3.1, 31.3 feet from Fox Hill Road and 33.2 feet from Easy Street. The existing exterior mechanical system appliance is nonconforming, and that it is located 23.7 feet from the easterly abutter. The proposed dwelling will be nonconforming, and that it will be located partially within the Coastal Conservancy District where a 50-foot setback is required, 31.5 feet from Fox Hill Road, and 35.5 feet from Easy Street where a 40-foot setback is required. The proposed exterior mechanical system appliances will be nonconforming, and that they will be located 21.6 feet from the easterly abutter where a 25-foot setback is required. The existing building coverage is 2,107 square feet, 30%, and the proposed building coverage is 2,788 square feet, 39.7%, where 15%, but not more than 2,800 square feet, is the maximum allowed. The lot is nonconforming, and that it contains 7,017 square feet of buildable upland, where 20,000 square feet, and contains 25,446 square feet of land area, where 40,000 square feet is required in the R40 zoning district. A special permit is required under Mass General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 6, and Section 5b of the protective bylaw.
Mr. Norcross?
Good afternoon, Jamie Norcross, representing the Nosera family. Joining me this afternoon is Andy Zaluzki, who is on the Zoom to participate. He's the architect for the project, and David Clark's in the audience. He was the engineer for the project. My clients purchased the property at 7 Easy Street in 2017. They are planning to spend more and more time in Chatham as they get older, and so they, about a year or so ago, they began the planning process in terms of enlarging or constructing a larger structure at the property that would allow for some more living area for them and their family as their use of the property continues to grow going forward. Existing house was built in the mid-1950s, so it's an older structure, and has a total of four bedrooms. The, after some extensive work looking at potential designs in the site, the Noseras determined that demolishing the existing structure and building a new structure made the most sense in terms of providing some necessary upgrades to the building and also providing the additional living area to the structure itself. The, it's a challenging site. A good chunk of the property is in the floodplain, as you can see on David's site plan on the screen, and a good chunk of the property is also within the setback to that vegetated wetland that you see at the north end of the property. And so options in terms of if you're going to tear down, where are you going to put the new structure, where you could put the new structure was really limited. So ultimately, what they came up with is more or less locating the structure within the existing footprint, as you see on the screen in front of you. The additions are at the back, at the The additions are at the back, at the rear of the property. There's a little bump out that would be over the existing deck or a portion of the existing deck. And then at the front of the structure, to the left of the existing garage, they proposed squaring off that section in terms of creating a bit of a larger footprint that would provide the additional living area on the interior. The lot is non-conforming. It has a total of 25,440 square feet, where 40,000 square feet is required. It's also non-conforming as it only has just over 7,000 square feet of buildable upland. And so that'll factor into some of the percentages that I'll review with you shortly. The existing house is non-conforming. It's located just over 30 feet to the setbacks to Easy Street and to Fox Hill Road, where 40 feet is required, and it's located, as I mentioned, within the Coastal Conservancy District, i.e. the floodplain. The existing AC condenser for the house on the east side is non-conforming as to that setback, but the existing structure itself is conforming at just over 26 feet, where 25 feet is required. Finally, as I mentioned, the existing building coverage is non-conforming as a total of 30%, where 15% or 2,800 is the maximum allowed. So in terms of that percentage, that's based on the 7,000 square feet of buildable upland. So if you factored in the total lot area, the number of the existing structure in terms of coverage is only about 8%. So again, that's the number we have to use, but I think it's a little bit deceiving in terms of the size of the structure vis-à-vis the actual land area on site. The proposed structure will not encroach any further towards Fox Hill Road or Easy Street. While they are squaring off the front of the house on Easy Street, it's still staying outside the current setback. The structure will also continue to meet the setback to the easterly of butter, and we are well away from the northerly of butter in terms of the proposed structure and the setback. The proposed mechanicals will be about three tenths of an inch closer to the east lot line, as shown on David's plan, and the proposed building coverage will increase by about 700 square feet or 9%. And again, I would point out that's based on the 7,000 square feet of upland, which makes those numbers jump quite a bit more than they would ordinarily, just based on the lot area. We are going up, we're adding a second story. David's plan does demonstrate that we are in compliance with the height limitations under the Chatham bylaw. The second story, again, provides that additional living area, since we can't really go out horizontally much more than we are. And so that allows them to some larger bedrooms and some more living space for the Nosera family. The, at this point, I would ask, Andy, if you could just run through the design for the board, I think that would be very helpful.
Okay. My name's Andrew Zaleski, I'm the president of the MZO Architectural Group in Stonem, Massachusetts. The house is set so that it is above the floodplain. You can see on the, on the picture that's on the screen, the flood vents that would allow the crawl space to flood and drain, so there wouldn't be any structural pressure against it in the event of a flood. The garage floor is above the floodplain, so there is no flood vents or anything. There's no open space under the garage floor, it's a solid fill. The design of the house, we've gone to a good length to keep the visual height of the house very tight. The upstairs is really set into dormers. We don't have any broad walls except on the end gables. We also have a lot of detail, which is, I believe, to be representative of other structures in the town of Chatham, reminiscent of the more turn-of-the-century colonial revival period. We do have a front entry porch, which is most of that area that actually extends forward to the existing footprint, but it is still back from the street. If we can go back to the floor plans, I guess let's start at the beginning. Okay. Yes, we, you can see the garage on the right side. And the house features several porches. There's a front entry porch that I already talked about. There is a porch on the left side that has a wonderful view out to the water and a small breakfast porch off the, off the great room. Again, getting views toward the water. That's an open porch. The one next to the great room is a glassed-in three-season room. So you really have a nice variety of spaces from the heart of the house to the porches and even to the deck. Depending on the time of year and the weather and everything, you can really use those spaces very nicely. It's an open-plan house, the dining room in the front, great room in the center. There is a guest suite on the first floor. There's a bedroom, a den, and a full bathroom. And so it's really, I guess we can't say master bedroom, it's primary, second, second primary bedroom, I guess I would call it. It is a beautiful suite and direct entry from the garage. The other piece I would point out is there is an outdoor rinse station, a shower, to the right of the garage. And there's a little door to go out there. If we go to the second floor. Okay, on the left side, there is a deck above that glassed-in porch, and it's open to an office. It is, the office has only a sliding door, it doesn't have closet, doesn't have access to bathroom or anything. It is really set up as an office and will be used in that fashion. Then there are three bedrooms that do have, each of them has access to a bathroom. I think the bathrooms and closets are quite adequate for the, for the family. The other small piece I'd like to point out, over to the right side of the house, there is a utility room. Because we're in an area where we don't have a basement, we don't have the ability to put any kind of mechanical equipment in a basement. We do have a specific utility room on the second floor where we can put the, the equipment that we need. I think you can go to the next picture. That is, okay, this is the front of the house, which we talked about. Down below, you can see that, that open porch is to the right of the center in that little gable. You can see the glassed-in porch with the deck above. The railing above is proposed to be a glass in the, so we don't have vertical mutton bars. We have a full glass per, perfect view. And you can also see the small deck that's off the kitchen and breakfast room. In the lower view, you can see the, the shower that's outside that has a little privacy wall around it. And I think you can see, again, the stairs going up to the deck. Go to the next, is there another picture? Are we at the end?
I think that's it, Andy, for the.
Okay. Very good. Again, you can see the flood vents, so that in the event of a flood, the water can flow in and out, and it won't put any structural pressure against the side of that foundation.
Great, thank you very much, Andy.
Thank you.
Moving along to the criteria, adequacy of the size of the site. Applicant believes the size of the site is adequate for the proposal. Again, it will meet both the butter setbacks and is not encroaching any closer to Fox Hill Road or Easy Street. The coverage, again, it's a high number, but if you calculate the square footage based on the total lot area, it's only at 11%, so it is actually well less than 15% looking at the total lot and not just buildable upland. Compatibility of the size of the proposed structure with neighboring properties. The neighborhood's a mixture of homes of various styles. In terms of the neighborhood, there's only three homes, including this one on Easy Street, but the neighborhood really seems to encompass there are a number of homes on Fox Hill Road that are nearby and over on the water that are in close vicinity. There's several homes on Avalon Point that are nearby. And there's actually some homes, if you've been out in the site, you see there's a new construction. That property's actually on Old Saltworks. So some of those properties actually get fairly close to this Easy Street neighborhood. And so, you know, there's a lot of larger homes in this general area, I would say, not so much. Maybe the two other properties on Easy Street itself, but in the, in the general neighborhood, which encompasses parts of Fox Hill and Avalon Point and Old Saltworks. Extent of the proposed increase in non-conforming nature of the structure of use. Only, the increase in non-conformities are to building coverage, as I mentioned, and the mechanicals being located slightly closer to the east lot line than the existing AC condenser. Suitability of the site, including but not limited to impact on neighboring properties or the natural environment. I would suggest the site is suitable for the proposed demolition and rebuild. There'll be no negative impact on neighboring properties or the environment caused by the proposed construction. And the project did receive approval from the Conservation Commission. It was continued until the January 25 meeting to issue the order of conditions. The structure, as Andy mentioned, will be placed on a flood-compliant foundation, and so that represents an improvement to the natural environment should there be any flood issues. Impact of scale setting and mass. There'll be no negative impact on neighborhood visual character. While the height of the building will be increased, the design and size of the home is still in keeping with the characteristics of the neighborhood. We're not encroaching, the structure is not encroaching any closer to any setbacks. And we think by locating the structure well back from the property lines, it's alleviating any concerns regarding massing. Number six, compatibility of the proposed use. Single-family residents in a residential neighborhood, so we are compatible. Seven, methods of sewer disposal. The property has an adequate and functioning Title V system. And I would suggest eight, nine, and 10 are not applicable in this case. So just in closing, I think it's a nice design, it's a challenging site, but I think the, the homeowners and their design team worked well to try and come up with something that is compatible with the neighborhood, and we would suggest not substantially more detrimental. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience, either here on Microsoft Teams, who wishes to speak in favor of this application? If so, tell us now you wish to join the meeting.
I see no one that wishes to speak in favor.
Okay, I'll read the correspondence. First is from Judith Giorgio. She's the health agent for the town, and she writes, "On January 10, I've reviewed the plan to demo and rebuild the dwellings." A dwelling, "A plan showing the existing floor plan is needed to determine the weather," maybe if weather, "the septic flow will be increased at the property. The house as proposed will not encroach on the existing system." Then we have, this is an email from Nicole Smith. She writes, "On December 30, 7 Easy Street was approved to draft an order of conditions." This is from the Conservation Commission. And the project was continued to January 25 to vote on the conditions." That's the extent of the correspondence. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak either against or has a specific question on this application? If so, please indicate now you'd like to join the meeting.
I see no one that wishes to speak in opposition or has a specific question.
Okay, questions from the board, Bill.
Kind of going off what came from the health agent with an existing floor plan, which would have been helpful, which we don't really have. How many bathrooms are in the existing house?
How many bathrooms?
Yeah.
Andy, do you know the number of bathrooms?
No, I, I don't. I know there were four bedrooms. I always thought the septic was based more on bedrooms. I don't know the number of bathrooms.
I mean, it, it seems like her concern is that she wasn't able to compare to see if the septic system was adequate. There's four and a half bathrooms that I counted in the new plan, is that right?
Yeah, I believe that's correct.
I mean, to me, until she can properly evaluate whether you need to upgrade the system or not, she probably needs to know that information.
Well, she's going to go off bedrooms, not bathrooms. So it's a four-bedroom house currently, and it's a proposed four-bedroom house with the plans.
Yeah, it just seemed like she didn't have the information she needed to make that judgment.
Yeah, no, but the.
I understand.
Yeah, and David, if you need, I know he's looked at the septic. So in terms of the, the current and proposed, it's supposed to stay the same for number of bedrooms.
Out there, when I was out there, I saw some stakes in the ground for some plantings and things like that. So has there been something given to the Conservation Commission or the Conservation Group about what's going to be planted or replanted or, I mean, I saw some stakes in the back of the.
David represented them at the Conservation Commission, so I'll let him weigh in on that question.
For the record, David Clark, Clark Engineering. So we went to Conservation back in December. This project was designed from the get-go to have no net increase in site coverage within Conservation's jurisdiction. And so because of that, no mitigations required. And, but, the owners did hire Wilkinson Ecological Design to basically restore most of the 50-foot buffer to the wetland in the back. So there is a plan that's part of the Conservation package to restore that area. And the, and Conservation did ask about foundation plantings. None were shown on the plan that was provided Conservation, but the homeowners may or may not proceed with putting formal landscaping around the house until, make that decision after the house is up. But they also agreed with Conservation that any of the plantings around the house would be natives.
So the stakes that are in the ground, they were, they had yellow flags. They representative of the 50-foot buffer line, more or less?
So what you see in the, towards the wetland, there'd be the 50-foot buffer line that was staked. And then between that and the actual wetland, there were additional stakes delineating, should have been delineating, additional stakes delineating the restoration area.
Okay. Did, you didn't address number 12 because it's in the floodplain. I just didn't know if you wanted to address that criteria in your presentation.
You know, we still go off the old criteria sometimes, it leaves off 12. What was the lateral expansion?
Yeah.
For the floodplain? Yeah, I mean, it is in the floodplain, so there's nothing. What's the, after, I'm trying to remember the specific criteria for 12. We never touch on it.
I can, David Clark again, I can speak to the way, as I stated before, how we approached this project, that there was no increase in site coverage within Conservation's jurisdiction. So nearly all of the expansion of that house is on the Easy Street side, and the Easy Street side of the house is not in the floodplain. There's a little sliver of flood that comes up in front of the house, but, but none of the expansion on, on the street side of the house is within that floodplain area.
So you're venting the foundation per the requirements?
The house is still in the floodplain. Because we can't fill on the backside, so there's no way around that. So we have to give up all the basement space that that house has now and, and put in a FEMA compliant foundation, basically fill in the existing basement.
Would you mind pulling up the site plans? I think David can show you the line that he's talking about with the, the lateral expansion.
Give me the point. There you go. See if I can figure this thing out. So FEMA line comes right up to the driveway, and this is part of it here. And the other part is right here. So it just clips the corner of the expansion right there. But this area, all in here, and in, in this area here, where the expansion is all outside the floodplain. It's, it's higher than the base flood elevation.
Did you consider coming up at all? And not filling, I understand, but, you know, and, and maybe raising that?
That was a discussion the, the original architect had with the Noseras because they want the second floor space. We're right up to the 30, 30 feet from the lowest adjacent grade right now.
Paul.
No questions. No questions.
No questions.
No questions.
I'll move to close the hearing and move into deliberations.
Second.
Need a vote?
All votes yes.
All votes yes.
Dave Thompson, yes.
Randy, yes.
I vote yes. Deliberations, Paul.
Well, I was a little concerned by the coverage question. But given that it's already at a 30%.
So I think that, I think this meets the criteria and is not substantially more detrimental.
I agree with Paul 100%.
And I do too, especially the setting portion. I think that saves the day for a lot of people.
It pains me to say it, but I agree.
I would agree as well.
Buck, you're gonna lose your title of chromogen of the ZBA. It's not good. Oh, all right. Oh, all right, all right. Okay, Paul.
All right, I'll move to approve the application as submitted. I guess the question becomes, when are you planning to do your construction?
They're planning to start as soon as they get the permits, and their builder told him he's trying to get done, well, exterior done, I guess, for, before the summer is their plan, but-
So if we were to impose our standard conditions, would that be appropriate in this neighborhood?
Yeah, I would, I would think that's appropriate. Exterior construction, as long as we'd be able to do some interior work, I think that would be fine.
All right, I'll move to approve the application as submitted with all construction activity and vehicles to be contained on-site or at a neighboring property with the permission of the property owner. Between June 30th and Labor Day, there would be no exterior construction allowed. No work can be permitted on weekends, and construction activity would be 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM only.
Second.
Need a vote?
Buck approves.
All votes, yes.
Dave Thompson, yes.
Yes.
And I vote yes. That's your unanimous vote. Thank you very much, Mr. Nocras.
Thank you very much.
And Mr. Clark. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, sir, we're on to 22-127.
Application number 22-127, William and Sandra Cordiano, care of William F. Riley Esquire, P.O. Box 707, Chatham, Mass. 02633. Owners of property located at 26 Watch Hill Way, also shown on the Town of Chatham's Assessor's Map, 17B Block 51, Lot C13. The applicant seeks to enlarge, extend, or change a non-conforming exterior mechanical system appliance on a non-conforming lot via the installation of an exterior mechanical system appliance generator. The existing exterior mechanical system appliance, AC condenser, is non-conforming and that it is located 15.4 feet from the Easterly butter. Proposed generator is non-conforming and that it will be located 12.5 feet from the Easterly butter where a 25-foot setback is required. The lot contains 19,834 square feet, where 40,000 square feet is required in the R40 zoning district. A special permit is required under Mass. General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 6 and Section 5B of protective bylaw.
Good afternoon, Bill Riley, on behalf of the Cordiano family. The, this is a special permit because we have an existing mechanical device that doesn't meet the setback on the side of the property. The, it did not do, written explanation of the criteria. But I think the important thing to note in this situation is the fact that the nearest structure on this side, on the east side of the house, is well over 100 feet away, and so that the, so that adding a generator in this situation would not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing structure. I can talk longer, but-
No, that's okay, Mr. Brown. And you might add that the, that structure is a barn. Well, it used to be a barn.
Well, I think they have living, yeah, but it was a barn with horses and stuff in it, you know?
Last time I looked in there, they actually still have the stalls.
Yeah, right.
Okay, well, anyway, is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak in favor of this?
There is no one that wishes to speak in favor.
And there's no correspondence. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak?
There is actually one person that wishes to speak in favor.
Oh, all right, and who would that be?
This is Bill, this is Bill Cordiano, the homeowner. I would be happy to answer any questions.
No, I think Mr. Riley will do that for us, but thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Is there anyone in the audience who has a question or would wish to speak against this? Please indicate now you'd like to join the meeting.
There is no one that wishes to speak in opposition or has a question.
Okay. Does anyone have a question? Let's start with Buck.
Buck has no questions.
No?
No questions.
No questions.
Dave Thompson, no questions.
No questions.
And I have none. Okay, Paul, motion, please.
I'll move to, I'll move to close the hearing and move into deliberations.
Second.
We need a vote, Buck?
Buck votes, yes.
All votes, yes.
Dave Thompson, yes.
And I vote, yes.
Okay, deliberations. Bill?
This is certainly not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than voting. I would support it.
Yes, I agree. It's certainly the right location. I mean, there's nothing around it, so it's hard to object.
Right.
I agree.
As do I.
And I do too.
Me too, okay.
It's certainly not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood, so I'll move to approve the application as submitted, and I don't think we needed any conditions.
I agree with that 100%.
Second.
And I approve.
I approve.
Dave Thompson, approve.
Approve.
I approve. That's your unanimous vote, Mr. Riley. Thank you very much.
We're sprinting through the agenda.
All right, the last one for today, sir, is 22-128, please.
Application number 22-128, Diane Donahue, care of William F. Riley Esquire, P.O. Box 707, Chatham, Mass. 02633. Owner of property located at 78 Silverleaf Avenue, also shown on the Town of Chatham's Assessor's Map, 16B Block 66, Lot 50. The applicant seeks to enlarge, extend, or change a non-conforming dwelling on a non-conforming lot via the demolition of an existing porch on the main dwelling and the construction of a new conforming carriage house/office and swimming pool. The existing building coverage is 2,029 square feet, 12.1%, and the proposed building coverage is 2,515 square feet, 14.96%, where 15% is the maximum allowed. The lot is non-conforming and that it contains 16,812 square feet, where 20,000 square feet is required in the R20 zoning district. A special permit is required under Mass. General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 6 and Section 5B of the protective bylaw.
Mr. Riley?
Good afternoon, Bill Riley, on behalf of Diane Donahue. Diane is here with us in this crowded auditorium. She wanted to have, Diane's living down here most of the year now, and as a year-round resident, she thought it would be very helpful if she could park her car undercover, and so she engaged the services of Roger Hoyt to design a one-stall garage with, like, office space above it. And I think Roger's done a great job. If you want, could you put up the Roger design? Now, if that doesn't fit in the Old Village, I don't know what does. In any event, so it's, it's very traditional design. It is located in the National Historic District, so I think Roger was very much attentive to that with the high-pitched roof and the dormers. The, just a quick run-through on the criteria. So we believe the size is adequate, size of the property is adequate because the building meets all setbacks, and the lot coverage is 14.96% where 15% is allowed. We think this is very much compatible with designs of other outbuildings in the Old Village. The, because the lot's non-conforming, oh, in terms of that, though, because the lot's non-conforming, erratic living space, you know, this is considered an intensification of the non-conforming residential use. Suitability of the site, including but not limited to impact on neighboring properties. Now, this is a question of will the construction on this property negatively impact neighboring properties? You've been to the site, you know, it's very level with no steep slopes, and there are no vegetation, no wetlands around, so we think, you know, the project is, the site is suitable for the proposed work. Impact of scale, setting, and mass on neighborhood visual character, including views, vistas, and streetscapes. Really, the only thing that's impacted here at all would be the streetscape, and I do say that I think Roger's design is very much in keeping with the streetscape, and to the extent that we are adding a building, I think is an improvement. The, you know, the use is compatible with neighboring uses, and so I think that, you know, we have an onsite septic system that's gonna remain. So I believe we're, you could find that the proposed structure is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing structure.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience here or on Microsoft Teams that wishes to speak in favor of this application? If so, please indicate now you'd like to join the meeting.
There is no one that wishes to speak in favor.
I'll read the correspondence. First is from Judith Giorgio, health agent for the Town of Chatham. She writes, "On January 10th, I've reviewed the plan to add a carriage house with living space above. A plan showing the existing floor plan with proposed renovation is needed to determine whether the septic flow will be increased at the property. The pool house as proposed will not encroach on the existing system." Then we have a note. This is from Christina Bassett. She writes, "On January 9th, the Chatham Historical Commission heard 78 Silverleaf in August of 2021 and determined that the home located there was historically significant, but the proposed changes do not materially diminish the home's significant, or historical significance, so therefore, no demolition delay was imposed."
That, that really had to do with proposed changes to the main house, which are not going forward, so.
Then we have a note. This is from Kevin McGuire. His address is 68 Silverleaf. He writes, "On January 12th, I own the home at 68 and am a direct abutter to the south. I have no objection to the granting of a special permit, which would allow the construction of the garage, which is subject of today's hearing. It would be helpful if exterior construction did not, did not take place during summer Then we have a note. This is from John and Kate Bridgden, from the name 32 Ivy Lane.
Yeah, Brigden.
Brigden?
Yeah.
All right, well, Monday, January 9th, they write, "We're residents of the Old Village and neighbors of Diane. We have reviewed the proposed plans for a carriage house/garage of the property and enthusiastically support them. The proposed building is consistent with the style of the existing house, is very attractive and fits in with the historic character of the neighborhood. The lot itself generously accommodates the new structure. The addition of a separate garage/ carriage house is consistent with the other houses on Silverleaf, most of which have attractive secondary/ detached garage structures. We hope you will approve this attractive proposal, which will enhance our charming Now we have a note. This is from Mark Logan, and he's at 64 Silverleaf, and he writes to Michelle Clark, "We're neighbors. We wish to respectfully express to you and the commission our support. The proposed structure would be an enhancement to the neighborhood and would fit nicely. We purchased in the Old Village because of the charm of our property within the neighborhood and the Old Village area in general, including proximity to Mill Pond, the shops, restaurants on Main and the beach. We respect and appreciate your good work and the good work of the ZBA in preserving the historical beauty and charm of this special area. We are delighted that Diane is approving the neighborhood in a classy, historically consistent manner. Thanks for passing this along to the commission and apologies for the lack of brevity." Then we have a note. This is from David and Marjorie French, 90 Silverleaf. On January 7th, they write, "We're Chatham residents and the Old Village since 2009, and are writing in support of approval for zoning regarding their proposed alterations to 78. We're familiar with the plans. We believe the project is appropriate in scale and in keeping with the look of the neighborhood. We appreciate the opportunity to offer our thoughts. Thank you for your consideration." That's the extent of the correspondence. Is there anyone in the audience or here that would like to speak either against this application or have a specific question?
There is no one in opposition or with a question.
Okay, questions from the board. Mr. Thompson?
I have no questions of Mr. Riley.
Nor do I.
So I thought you'd, the print I have says that they are reducing the bedrooms in the main house from six to five, but then you mentioned they're not going forward with that, so there's still six bedrooms in the main house?
The, I hadn't discussed it with Diane.
Field card says six.
Bill? Bill, can Diane come up to the, please?
Excuse me, pardon me. The field card states six bedrooms-
Would you identify yourself, please? We know who you are.
This is Diane Donahue, 78 Silverleaf. The field card states that I have six bedrooms. Currently, they're, we are using five as bedrooms.
It's something that she got to work out with the, with the Board of Health.
So that was kind of my question. It looks like, and I don't, I think this question would go to Jay. You've educated us in the past that when they put down office on a room, it has to be an office.
That's the way the building-
So the bed, the, the bed, the room over the garage or carriage house, in your, the rules and laws of the Commonwealth, that's an office. Does the health inspector, do you know if Judith has to also follow those same rules, or can she make the determination that this would be a seventh bedroom?
You are correct. We have to treat it just the way the plans are presented to us at the Building Department, but the Board of Health has their own criteria for determining whether or not it's considered a bedroom.
Thank you.
Yeah, and the, just so you know, I mean, under our Board of Health regulations, a homeowner can apply for an additional bedroom if they agree to provide what we call an IA system. So Diane will either have to remove a bedroom in her house or provide an IA system because the, the Board of Health is going to consider this as a bedroom.
One more time, Bill, on that, please. They did determine it was a bedroom?
No, they, they, well, they will, because it has the requisite degree of privacy. It qualifies it as a bedroom under their regulations. So Diane will either have to, you know, take one of the bedrooms in her house and open it up so it's no longer considered a bedroom by the Board of Health, or apply to the Board of Health under their process for adding an additional bedroom by providing a nitrogen-reducing septic system. So she'll have to do it one way or the other, and I don't think she's made that decision yet.
Thank you.
Bill?
I think that answered my question.
Paul?
Did Judith Giorgio refer to a pool house?
She did.
Well, yeah, but there is no pool house. I don't know exactly what she was referring to. I mean, the, one of the things that Diane is considering is putting a plunge pool, if you look on the site plan, putting a plunge pool in the, in the back, in the rear of the proposed garage. Again, that's a decision that hasn't necessarily been made yet, but when she was speaking with both the Hoyts and Tom Stello, the surveyor, she talked about it, so they, they put it on the plan.
She talked about a plunge pool, but you didn't, but you haven't done anything about a pool house for it?
No, there is no pool, no, there's no pool house proposed.
Okay. What's the, just curiosity, what is the difference between a plunge pool and a soak pool?
You're gonna have to ask Diane that question, because I don't know.
As far as I know, they're pretty much the same.
Okay. I have no other questions.
You're gonna have to ask Diane that question because I don't know.
As far as I know, they're pretty much the same.
I have no other questions.
You mentioned, I believe, that you weren't going to take off the porch as on the original plan. Is that correct?
Well, as far as I know, no work is proposed on the main building.
But if that's true, doesn't that kick you over the 15%?
I don't think so because the, the plan that was prepared by Tom Stello doesn't have any reductions in the main house. That was something that was talked about previously.
It looks like it's, it says existing ports to be removed.
Yeah, that's on the, that's on the back. If you look, I, depends which porch you're talking about. If you look on the site plan, there you go. See, that 15 square feet, that's going to be removed. That is going to be removed.
15 square feet, not the big one on?
Not the big one on the side, no.
So does that change?
No, scroll up to the calculation again, Sarah.
Okay, so you still qualify being less than 15?
Yes.
Even with that porch gone?
That's correct.
15 square feet?
Sometimes, sometimes 15 square feet's important.
Dave?
I think I've already been asked.
Well, that's all right.
I think I've already been asked.
All right, okay. That's it. Anybody else have anything to say?
I'll move to close the hearing and move into deliberations.
Second.
Buck approves.
Paul approves.
Dave?
Dave Thompson approves.
I approve.
And I do, too. Okay, Paul, what are we going to do about conditions?
We haven't deliberated. I want to discuss the question of whether we think this complies. I'll start by saying I think that this is not going to be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood.
Oh, okay. I jumped ahead of myself.
That's all right.
I'm very sorry.
That's all right. As I say, I don't think this is going to be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. It's supported by neighbors and it looks attractive, so I think I will vote favorably.
See, Dave Nixon's a young man in a hurry. That's why he jumped ahead.
I am.
The design of the garage is great. It's going to fit right in that neighborhood. Everybody needs a garage. I'm in favor.
Randy?
I think it's a beautiful plan and it fits right in, and I wish you well.
I agree. It's a beautiful design. I agree with the neighbors. It'd be a lovely addition. I'm uncomfortable with this bedroom count. I'm not sure if it's six or seven on a 16,000-square-foot lot. It doesn't seem to jive with anything I know in this town, but, so I'm kind of, I'd love to hear what the chair has to say.
Yeah, I think design-wise, it certainly is going to fit in and it would be a nice addition. I am concerned about the bedroom count, but I think hopefully the, you know, the board of health will catch it or they'll review it and analyze it properly. It does seem like a lot of bedrooms for this size septic system, and hopefully the site can accommodate additional area or a new system if required. So I would support it.
Diane, would you, man, go back up there, please? Thank you. You can see there's some concern about this bedroom business. Typically, in that area, the bedrooms are very small. Is that true of your own?
Yes, they're very small.
Okay. So would you state to us what your intention, what would you like to see happen there? Let's say that the health folks say that room over the garage is a bedroom. And I think from what Mr. Riley just said, that's what you're going to find. So we need an assurance that you're going to reduce the bedrooms in the house from six to five.
I think that's inappropriate. I think, I think what you need an assurance for is there'll be full compliance with board of health regulations. And I can assure you that the departments here in the town work very well together and Judy Giorgio, as the board of health agent, is going to require either A, having one of the bedrooms in the house be opened up sufficiently so it's no longer considered a bedroom, or combined with another room, so there's only, so reduces the number in the house by one, or that Diane has to add a nitrogen-reducing component pursuant to the board of health regulations, which allows an existing structure, even if they have more bedrooms than would typically be allowed under our nitrogen requirements, to add one bedroom if they add a nitrogen-reducing system. Now, the reason they do that, the town's very concerned about nitrogen going into the groundwater. And what they found, and we fought a lot about this about 15 years ago, maybe 20, nobody even remembers Paul Kelly anymore, but anyway, he was, he was on the board of health. And so what was established was that when you add a nitrogen-reducing component to an existing system, the nitrogen going into the groundwater is reduced significantly so that even by adding another bedroom, the nitrogen going into the groundwater is less than the existing house was putting into the ground. And so that's the purpose of the regulation, and I don't know if Diane's thought the thing through in terms of what she wants to do inside her house or not, but I think it's appropriate for this board to say, "We demand full compliance with the board of health regulations because that's what we're going to do."
Well, that's your opinion.
Well, that's true.
And that doesn't necessarily mean that that settles the matter for Buck and Bill.
Well, I think it's.
So I'm going to ask Buck.
So normally, I would sit here and say, "Well, we got a lot of ifs or we don't know what we want to do." And part of that backing that up is, and no offense, Diane, I've done this many times myself. I went and got everything approved and went through the paperwork and two years later, well, I'm still not sure if I'm going to do it. And that happens and things change in this world. But, no, I really don't like approving something that I don't know what I'm approving. It's not, it's, I mean, we have all these documents and everything, but it's kind of, I'm a little bit unsure, but, you know, if that was, and I'm not asking for a continuance because I know that's a pain in the neck and we do too many of those. I just feel uncomfortable not knowing what I'm approving. And I understood your opinion.
It's not my opinion.
As long as it's in compliance, we shouldn't worry about it.
Well, it's not, in the first place, you know, you know exactly what you're approving. You're approving a garage with space over with, that the board of health is going to consider a bedroom. That's what we're requesting and that's what you would be approving if you approve it. The question that you are dealing with is completely outside, with all due respect, the responsibilities of this august body. The board of health, working with Jay, is very firmly in control of those situations. And we've done a lot of projects where, where we go into this hearing, you know, the applicant knows what they want to do with the extra bedroom that they're either going to have to open up or put an IA system in. And you've approved them before that way. So again, unfortunately, I don't think Diane kind of thought through, oh, what are you going to do with the extra bedroom? But I think, I think it's unfair to penalize her because she didn't plan to answer the question about the board of health regulations and how she's going to come into compliance with them. But she has every intention, in fact, is going to be required to come into compliance with the board of health regulations. So I think that, that, you know, you know, the design is great. The regulations are in place to take care of what she wants to do, whether she wants to take a bedroom out or add IA. But I think that, you know, the standard for this board is whether, you know, this is substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing structure. So.
Bill, you didn't have a chance to weigh in again.
Well, I would only say this in response. I mean, we're looking at a plan that I think is part of this package that says that existing six-bedroom dwelling to be reduced to five bedrooms. So if that's what you're going to do and you're committing to do, so be it, you know, but it's on here. Now, whether it was supposed to still be on here or not, that is really immaterial now, I think.
So Buck, how do you feel?
Currently, the home is used as a five-bedroom home and will continue to be used as a five-bedroom home.
But you have to take the physical steps inside the house.
And I'm more than happy to do that.
I think Bill deserves a gift.
I didn't say that with the mic on hot. I'll submit.
Well, I thought you were talking about me.
Well, you deserve a gift also, Bill.
I know that. That's why I'm looking at her.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I wanted Mr. Briggs to weigh in, if you would. Do we need to worry about this? Is this, is this in our lane? And if so, how is it in our lane?
I don't think we need to worry about it. The board of health will address it and they won't get a certificate of compliance or occupancy on the structure until the board of health is satisfied.
Yeah, I agree with what Jay said and I agree with what, I actually agree with what Mr. Riley said. So it seems to me it's controlled by the board of health and it's not really something that we should be concerned about. Either they make a revision to an IA system or they don't and they reduce the number
All set? Buck, you're not all set. You're all set.
Yeah. Everybody's happy, I'm happy.
All right, Buck.
I move to approve the application as submitted. The question, I guess, is conditions from my viewpoint.
So you should say you have to begin after September 1st?
Sure.
Okay, no construction before September 1st.
And the other, other conditions that we normally apply, I'll add those. All construction activity and vehicles will be contained on-site or at a neighboring property with the permission of the property owner. Between June 30th and Labor Day, there would be no exterior construction allowed. No work shall be permitted on weekends and construction activity would be between 8:00 a.m. and 5:00 p.m. only.
Right, yeah, in the summertime, right. That's correct.
Second?
Go ahead.
Second?
All right. Buck?
We ready to vote?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Paul?
Paul votes yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
And I vote yes. That's a unanimous decision.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay. I think we've come to the end almost. I would remind all the members that if you're going to be taking any vacations, please, please let Sarah know when that is and all that, in case we start to get a little light on members, so, just in case. Speaking of which, I've been called out of the country, so I won't be here next time.
I'm not going to be here either.
Where are you going?
Boston.
Oh, all right, there's two down.
I changed my bus.
No.
I'm only going to Boston. Where are you going?
Out of the country.
Out of the country. Well, I suppose I could change it and.
Well, no, no, no. That's very important.
It's not a problem.
Do we know of any others or we don't know about, Mr. Briggs?
I will reach out. I will reach out to David tomorrow and see if.
Okay, because I hate to see you have to change an appointment.
And then I will let you know, David.
I'll let you know. I will do it.
I'll change it then.
Are you going out of the country to Lake Moansure?
No, no. Later, when the cat's away, the mics will play.
Mr. Chair? When are we going to put an announcement in the paper for a public hearing on the changes that we're going to vote on?
Potentially February 9th on that agenda, or it'll be February 23rd. I'm just waiting for one additional piece of information before we determine the exact date that it will be, the public hearing on the changes to the rules and regulations.
So 95% in February, the first or second meeting is when, the posting will be done in January, well, January for the.
Correct.
But the voting and the hearing will be in February.
Okay.
Perfect.
All right. So with that, I guess, what's something else? What do you think about my German, Paul?
I'll move to a German.
Second.
Buck votes yes.
Bill?
Bill votes yes.
Paul?
He's getting good at those seconds. I'll vote yes. I'll vote yes.
Randy?
Yes.
I vote yes. And what's the official time zone?
4:06 p.m.
4:06, how about that? That's pretty good. Good night, all.
Yeah. Push it. Push it. All right. Thank you. Bye. 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 Bye.